The session is called to order. All please rise for the Philippine National Anthem. Please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer. Secretary General. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
The Secretary General is directed to read the call, call the roll of members.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives: Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Charon, Asidre, Ako, Adyong, Advincula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautistalin, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondo, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulut Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castrofranz, Castrojean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tua, Chungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Juanco Jaime, Ko Juanco Mark, Ko Lada, Ko Leantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Dagoo, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghiram, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisio Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleio, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Farinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortez, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galios, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gadiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Goed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Giko, Gintu, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Harasco Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagonsani, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limkaychong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Batugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercador, Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Misai, Noel, Nograles Juanfidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Ominar, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dison, Padernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicia, Sagabas, Kumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rekto, Regencia, Remulia, Revilia Brian, Revilia Ramon Holo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Iulogio, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedamari, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangan, Salo, Salvami, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Richel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horacio, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Kit Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Shamir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Juanco, Tariela, Teodoro, Teves Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Chanco, Cheng, Tolentino, Tulfojos, Jocelyn, Tulfor Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Totor, Ti, Umali, Unabya, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velozotuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia Forte, Luis Raymond, Villia Forte, Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villiarasa, Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yasmuan, Yap Kristin Tel, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Edvik, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yu Lo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri.
Mr. Speaker, the roll show shows that 310 members responded to the call. With 310 members responding to the call, the chair declares the presence of a call room. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the deferment of the approval of journal of the previous sessions.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as messages, communications, and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committees.
Reference of Business: Bills on First Reading. House Bill 7542: Converting the Sera Avenue Junction Digos Macar Road to Silway 8 Bypass Road into a National Road by Representative Atcharon.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 7543: To Promote the Welfare of Barangay Officials by Representative Fresnedi.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 7544: Providing for the Apportionment of the Lone Legislative District of Montinlupa into two Legislative Districts by Representative Fresnedi.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 7554: Developing the TICOG Industry and Declaring Basie Samar as the Banig Capital of the Philippines by Representatives Noel and Lakson Noel.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 7555: Providing for the Protection of Filipino Workers in the BPO Industry by Representatives Noel and Lakson Noel.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 7558: Institutionalizing a 5% Budgetary Allocation for Senior Citizens from the Internal Revenue Allotment of the LGUs by Representative Suwan.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 7559: Strengthening the Water Service Cooperatives by Representative Suwan.
To the Committee on Cooperative Development.
House Bill 7560: Providing for the Construction of a National Highway in Poalas, Lanau del Sur to be known as the Sapad Poalas Highway by Representatives Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid, Dimaporo City Amina, and Balindong.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 7562: Ensuring Zero Hunger for all Filipinos by Representative Abante.
To the Special Committee on Food Security.
House Bill 7563: Banning the importation, manufacture, processing, use, or distribution in commerce of asbestos and asbestos-containing products by Representative Haresco.
To the Committee on Health.
Resolutions: House Resolution 843: Strongly urging the LTFRB to postpone the planned phase-out of all traditional jeepneys pending the resolution directing the House Committee on Transportation to conduct inquiries on the adverse socioeconomic impacts of the planned jeepney phase-out without adequate government support by Representative Noel.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 844: Honoring the Contributions of Filipino Women Leaders and Participants to the country's peace processes and urging the OPAPRUE to increase and encourage women's participation in formal peace negotiations and other peace processes in celebration of the 2023 National Women's Month by Representative Mercado Revilia.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Resolution 845: Expressing the sense of the House that the Philippine government urges the government of Japan to formally acknowledge, apologize for, and accept its responsibility over the sexual slavery of young women commonly known as comfort women by the Japanese Imperial Army during World War II and provide compensation to the victims by Representatives Brosas, Castrofranz, and Manuel.
To the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
House Resolution 846: Urging the Committee on Energy to immediately conduct an inquiry on the inefficient operation of Eastern Samar Electric Cooperative in Eastern Samar by Representative Libanan.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 847: Urging the Committee on Environment and Natural Resources and Committee on Transportation to immediately conduct and investigate the surrounding events which led to the sinking of MT Princess Empress on February 28, 2023 and resulted in the worst oil spill in the history of the Philippines by Representative Olaso.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 848: Directing the Committee on Natural Resources to conduct an inquiry into the cause of the Oriental Mindoro oil spill and the urgent containment and removal measures already being conducted and yet to be conducted to prevent further damage to the rich natural resources of the Verde Island Passage by Representative Salceda.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 849: Directing the Committees on Trade and Industry and Health to conduct an inquiry on the reported carcinogenic asbestos found in Johnson &amp; Johnson baby powder and other products containing asbestos which is detrimental to public health by Representative Haresco.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 850: Directing the appropriate House Committee to conduct an inquiry on the impact to the environment and livelihood of Fisher folks of the reported oil spill in Nauhan Oriental Mindoro by Representative Lee.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 851: Requesting the Comlec to reconsider its decision to hold an early filing of certificates of candidacy for the upcoming Barangay and Sangunyang Kabataan elections by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reform.
House Resolution 852: Directing the House Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability to conduct an investigation on the alleged irregularities of irregularities of the sugar shipment that arrived at the port of Patangas on February 9, 2023 by Representative Barbers.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications: Letters and Emails from local chief executives and government officials transmitting to the House copies of reports on fund utilization and status of program, program project activity implementation relative to the local government support fund and bayanian grant to city municipalities and province.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated January 25, 2023 of the National Disaster Risk Reduction Management Council Undersecretary and Executive Director and Administrator submitting to the House of Representatives a report on the update of the status of the NDRRM Fund as of December 31, 2022.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated February 2 and 9, 2023 of the DOTR Undersecretary for Administration and Finance transmitting to the House a copy of their statement of approved budget utilizations, disbursements, and balances for trust receipts for the quarter ending December 31, 2022, and certain financial reports for January 2023.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated February 13, 2023 of the Presidential Advisor on Peace, Reconciliation, and Unity Secretary informing the House that OPAPRUE's financial report for the month of January 2023 was submitted to the unified reporting system and posted on their official website.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated February 15, 2023 of the Halapan Waterworks Corporation President submitting to the House a copy of their 2022 operational report.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
Letter dated February 22, 2023 of the Commission on Human Rights Chairperson submitting to the House certain budget and financial accountability reports for the quarter ending December 31, 2022.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Committee Report: Committee Report Number 439 submitted by the Special Committee on Creative Industry and Performing Arts on House Resolution 857.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move, I move the consideration, I move for the consideration on a third reading of House Bill Number 7240. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill, joint, read the title of the bill and therefore call the roll of nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 7240 and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7240: An Act Criticizing the National Government to Improve Public Service Delivery and Appropriating Funds Therefore. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7240. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Ako, Adyong, Advincula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautistalin, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondo, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas.
Mr. Speaker, my vote is no and I would like to explain my vote later.
The honorable Brosas will have the opportunity to explain her vote after the result of the vote is announced.
Buahin, Bulut Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castrofranz. Sir Speaker, my vote is no and I will explain my vote later.
Castrojean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tua, Chungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Juanco Jaime, Ko Juanco Mark, Ko Lada, Ko Leantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Dagoo, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghiram, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Del Mar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian Paul, Ecleio, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Farinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortez, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galios, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gadiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Goed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Giko, Gintu, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Haresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga Ara, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagonsani, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limkaychong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel.
Mr. Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the honorable Manuel?
My vote for the bill is also no and I would like to explain my vote later.
The honorable Manuel may do so at the conclusion of the vote.
Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Batugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercador Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Misai, Noel, Nograles Juanfidel, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Ominar, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dison, Padernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas, Kumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rekto, Regencia, Remulia, Revilia Brian, Revilia Ramon D'Lo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Iulogio, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedamari, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangan, Salo, Salvami, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Richel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horacio, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Shamir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Juanco, Tariela, Teodoro, Teves Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Tianko, Tien, Tolentino, Tulfo Jocelyn, Tulfor Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Totor, Ti, Umali, Unabya, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velozotuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia Forte, Luis Raymond, Villia Forte, Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villiarasa, Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yasmuan, Yap, Yap Kristin Tel, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Edvik, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yu Lo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri.
Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7240. Kahayon Uy, Duterte, Hagedorn, Libanan. Panotes, Romero, Santos, Singson Ronald, Tambunting, Tan Shamir, Tan Tambut, Teves Arnulfo, Vergara, Villanueva.
Vergara, Villanueva.
With two-hundred-ninety-two members voting in the affirmative, three in the negative and zero abstentions, House Bill number seventy-two forty is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Arlene Brosas of Gabriela Partilis to explain their vote. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
The Honorable Brosas has three minutes.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, this representation firmly votes no to House Bill number seven-two-four-zero or the National Government Rightsizing Act. Ayon sa section-two Declaration of Policy na House Bill number seven-two-four-zero, the government shall focus its functions and resources on the essential role, scope and level of governance, and minimize if not eliminate redundancies, overlaps and duplications in its operations and simplify its rules and regulations and systems and processes. Ang National Government Rightsizing Act na isa sa mga prioridad na panukalang batas ng kasalukuyang gobyerno ay nangangahulugan ng malawakang tanggalan sa trabaho ng mga kawanee sa pampublikong sektor. Ayon kay DBM Secretary Pangandaman, hundred-eighty-seven na ahensya at dalawang milyong kawanee ang maapektuhan ng panukalang batas na ito. Ang rightsizing ay makakatipid din umano ng five percent sa tao ng budget ng gobyerno para sa pagpapasweldo na nagkakahalaga ng fourteen-point-eight billion pesos. Malaki ang magiging epekto nito sa mga kawanee ng gobyerno, lalo na ang mga nasa possession ng rank and file, kontraktual, job order at contract of service. Malaki rin ang posibilidad na hindi mapupunta sa serbisyo sa mamayan ang fourteen-point-eight billion na matitipid sa pagsasabatas nito. Bagkus maaari itong gamitin upang pambayad utang ng bansa at maaaring maging balon ng korapsyon. Mister Speaker, tipid na tipid ang gobyernong ito pagdating sa sahod na ibibigay sa mga manggagawa at kawanee ng gobyerno. Samantalang naislaanan ng nine-point-five billion ang mga delegado na bubuo sa Constitutional Convention at makakatanggap ng per dime na ten thousand pesos para sa ka daaraw na actual attendance. Sa panahon na nangangailangan ng trabaho ang mamamayang Pilipino, sabik na sabik ang gobyerno na isabatas ang National Government Rightsizing Act na magdudulot ng kawalan ng trabaho sa milyong manggagawa sa pamahalaan. Kaya naman po bumoboto ng no ang representasyong ito sa House Bill number seven-two-four-zero. Maraming salamat, Mister Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Franz Castro of Act Teachers Partilis to explain their vote.
The Honorable Castro has three minutes.
Maraming salamat, Ginong Speaker at sa ating Majority Leader. Mariin na niredehistro ng kinatawang ito ang botong no sa House Bill seventy-two-four-zero o ang National Government Rightsizing Act. Tulad ng lahat ng mga governmental organization na mga nagdaang administrasyon, magreresulta lamang ito na malawakang tanggalan sa trabaho sa hanay ng mga kawanee ng pamahalaan. Imbis naunahin ang mga panukala upang itaas ang sahod, benepisyo at papatigil ng kontraktualisasyon para sa mas marami ang mahikayat na magsilbi sa bayan bilang mga government employees, priority na adminisasyong Marcos Junior ang pagpasan ng government downsizing. Napakarami, napakarami mga kontraktual ang hindi binibigyan ng permanenteng posisyon kahit na necessary at desirable ang kanilang mga trabaho sa mga government service at bukod pa don ay more than five years, ten years, twenty years na sila sa trabaho. Pulang ng tao na magbibigay ng serbisyo para sa ating mamayan. Pulang tayo, halimbawa sa bahagi ng edukasyon, mga support personnel sa mga pampublikong paaralan. Pulang din tayo ng mga health workers sa mga public health facilities, lalong-lalo na sa mga liblib na mga lugar. Ang mga tunay na nakakaalam at nakararanas ng hirap sa public service ay walang tunay na boses sa gagawing governmental organization. Batay sa section-seven, hanggang consultation lamang sila, matapos ang pagpasan ng batas. Ang bumubuo sa Committee on Rightsizing, the Executive Branch o 'yung kinatawag na CREB, at ang magdedesisyon kung gaano karami o kaunti ang mga posisyon sa gobyerno ay pawang mga matataas na opisyal lamang. Walang boses, walang say ang ordinaryong government employee. Samantala, habang ipinatutupad ng CREEB ang government downsizing, cargo pa rin ng mga natitirang mga kawanee na magsilbi na para bang normal lang at hindi sila mababawasan ang tao. Hindi rin tunay na mapoprotektahan ang karapatan sa kasiguruhan sa trabaho o security of tenure ng mga government employees. Pangunahing inaalala ng ating mga kawanee ay ang baka kinabukasan mawalan na sila ng trabaho. Hindi nakakapagpalubag loob na makatanggap ka lang ng separation pay at retirement benefits kung matatanggal ka dahil sa programang ito. Masakla pa rito, mauuna ang tanggalan ng trabaho at downsizing kaysa magkaroon ng impact assessment. Ayon sa interpelasyon, tinatantya na six years na ipatutupad ang National Government Rightsizing Program at tatlong taon pagkatapos noon ng assessment. Bali tinatanggal muna ang kawanee kaysa alamin kung ano ay 'yung nagiging epekto nito sa serbisyo ng government, ng gobyerno sa mamayan. Privatasyon ng serbisyong panlipunan ang metiin ng House Bill seven-two, seven-two-four-zero. Sa ilalim ng section-five-B at section-six-A-two, pauubaya sa pribadong sektor ang mga programa at serbisyo na dapat ay hawak ng ating mga kawanee. Napakaironic na tayo ay nasa public service pero puro magiging privatization ang ipapasang batas. Hindi right ang panukalang National Government Rightsizing. Tutulan, labanan ang government downsizing na adminisasyong Marcos Junior. Maraming salamat, Mister Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Raoul Manuel of Kabataan Partilis to explain their vote. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
The Honorable Manuel has three minutes.
Mister Speaker, bumoboto ang kabataan ng no sa panukalang i-rightsize or more accurately i-downsize ang pambansang pamahalaan. Ito ay magreresulta sa malawakang disempleo sa panahon ng matinding krisis sa ekonomiya, bunso'd ng mababang sahod at matataas na presyo ng bilihin. Dagdag pa rito, may bahid ng diskriminasyon at hindi makatarungan ang panukalang pagbabawal sa reemployment, umuling pagtatrabaho sa gobyerno ng mga kawanee na magreretiro o mahihiwalay sa serbisyo dahil sa rightsizing. Dagdag dyan, Mister Speaker, ayon sa datos ng International Labor Organization, out of one-hundred-twenty-eight countries, the Philippines ranks ninety-seventh sa bilang ng mga tao ng bahagi ng labor force na nasa gobyerno. Out of our total labor force, only nine percent are working in government. This is only half of the average rate of those one-twenty-eight countries, which stands at eighteen percent. Sa halip na malawakang pagtatanggal ng mga kawanee ng gobyerno ang gagawin, dapat ay gawing regular ang mga kontraktual na kawanee at magdagdag pa ng posisyon na sa gayon ay mas mapaunlad at mapabilis ang pagbibigay ng serbisyo sa taong bayan, lalo na ng frontline services, pagbibigay ng ayuda, paghahatid ng libreng edukasyon at serbisyong pangkalusugan at iba pa. Gobyerno na nga ang isa sa mga pangunahing nagpapatupad ng kontraktualisasyon, if not at the forefront, gobyerno din ngayon ay nagiging eemplo ng malawakang tanggalan. Ayaw natin ang ganitong sistema na siyang papasukin ng mga kabataan ang pag-asa ng bayan, oras na henerasyon na natin ang magpapatakbo ng lipunan. Muli, bumoboto tayo ng no sa rightsizing program. Salamat, Mister Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill number seven-zero-zero-six. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and therefore to call the role for nominal voting. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill seven-zero-zero-six and thereafter call the role for nominal voting.
House Bill seven-zero-zero-six, an act providing for the automatic income classification of provinces, cities and municipalities, amending for the purpose section-eight of Republic Act number seven-one-six-zero, otherwise known as the Local Government Code of nineteen-ninety-one as amended. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill number seven-zero-zero-six. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Ako, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogansha, Asistyo, Atide, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskub, Bautista, Bautistalin, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulut Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tua, Tungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Huanko Jaime, Ko Huanko Mark, Kolada, Kolyantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venezia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Kalib, Dimaporo Siti Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Farinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galeos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Giko, Gintu, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagidorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Kung Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Saney, Lara, Lasatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limkaytong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikiz, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoletta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercador Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Misai, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Ominari, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Oano Dizon, Padiernos, Padwano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas, Humaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Repto, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilyo, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Iolojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Iada Marie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbahon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Richel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasho, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Huatko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez Arnolfo, Tevez Jose, Changpo, Teng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umali, Unabya, Ungab, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Beloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarazas Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christiantel, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Edwick, Yap Eric, Yu Divine Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo- Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horacio, Swansing Micaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Jose, Chanco, Cheng, Tolentino, Tulfo Josidin, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Chutor, Ti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Bergara, Berzosa, Villia, Villaferte Luis Raymond, Villaferte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Rio Lago, Yamsuwan, Yap Christyantel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edwick, Yap Eric, Udi Vinigres, UJ Zel Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri.
Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7006. Kahayon Uy, Duterte, Panotes, Singson Ronald, Tan Samir, Tan Tambut, Tevez Arnulfo, Bergara, Villanueva.
With 300 members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative and zero abstentions, House Bill Number 7006 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7210. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and therefore call out, uh, call the role of nominal voting. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 7210 and thereafter to call the role for nominal voting.
House Bill 7210, an act declaring February 7 of every year as National Religious Freedom Appreciation Day in celebration of the World Interfaith Harmony League of the United Nations. Roll call of members, honorable members. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agarau, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Argansha, Asistio, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buhaen, Bulut Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carey, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tua, Tsungalao, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Huanco Jaime, Ko Huanco Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kua, Quaresma, Tagooc, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Dimaporo Siti Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Du Hali, Duterte, D. Faustino Ino, D. Faustino Michael Carlos, D. Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Fariñas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuente Belia, Galeios, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garjola, Garin, Casataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goreseta, Giko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagidorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Conghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sanny, Lara, Lasatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limkaytong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Mag sino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikiz, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisai, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Oaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuang, Ordanes, Ortega, Oanodison, Padernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Remisas Agabas, Kumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Recto, Rehencia, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramon Jolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yulojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedamari, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rachel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horacio, Swansing Micaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Jose, Tianko, Cheng, Tolentino, Tulfo Josidin, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Chutor, Ti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Bergara, Berzosa, Villia, Villaferte Luis Raymond, Villaferte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Rio Lago, Yamsuwan, Yap Christyantel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edwick, Yap Eric, Udi Vinigres, UJ Zel Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7210. Duterte, Panotes, Singson Ronald, Tan Tambut, Tevez Arnulfo, Bergara, Villanueva.
With 302 members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative and zero abstentions, House Bill Number 7210 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Motion to suspend, Mr. Speaker?
Session suspended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker. Consideration of the unfinished business. Consideration of House Bill 4605 under Committee Report Number 316 and we request the Secretary General to read the title of the same.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved and the period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of said bill is citizen's period of sponsorship and debate. Mr. Speaker, considering that there are no further members of the House who wishes to interpolate, we move to close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved and the period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed.
Mr. Speaker, we move to open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved and the period of amendments is hereby opened.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, we move to close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved and the period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed.
Mr. Speaker, I move to vote on second reading, House Bill Number 4605 under Committee Report 316.
As many as are in favor of House Bill 4605, please say "aye". Those opposed, please say "nay". The ayes have it, House Bill 4605 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Session resumes. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, consideration of the unfinished business. Consideration of House Bill 4605 under Committee Report Number 316, and we request the Secretary General to read the title of the same.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 4605, an act providing for the right of married women to retain their maiden surnames, amending for the purpose Article 370 Republic Act Number 386 as amended, otherwise known as the New Civil Code of the Philippines.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of said bill is it is in this period of sponsorship and debate. Mr. Speaker, considering that there are no further member of the House who wishes to interpolate, we move to close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. And the period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we move to open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion, the period of amendments is hereby open.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee, nor neither committee nor individual amendments, we move to close the period of amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to vote on second reading, House Bill Number 4605 under Committee Report 316.
As many as are in favor of House Bill 4605, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 4605 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to other local in our business. I move that we consider on second reading, House Bill 6772 under Committee Report Number 413, and may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. And the Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 6772, an act granting the President of the Philippines the power to suspend and adjust the period of implementation of the scheduled increase of premium rates for direct contributors of the Philippine Health Insurance Corporation, amending for the purpose Republic Act Number 11223, otherwise known as the Universal Healthcare Act.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Gato to deliver his sponsorship speech.
The Honorable Gato is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Distinguished colleagues, I have the honor to sponsor and present before this august body Committee Report Number 413 on House Bill Number 6772. This vital piece of legislation, Mr. Speaker, seeks to amend Section 10 of the Republic Act Number 11223, otherwise known as the Universal Healthcare Act. As the very title of the bill provides, the proposed measure seeks to grant the President of the Philippines the power to suspend and adjust the period of implementation of the scheduled increase of premium rates for direct contributors of the Philippine Health Insurance Corporation. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, House Bill Number 6772, which is principally authored by our Speaker Ferdinand Martin Giro Maldes, is crucial in providing economic relief to the Filipino people during national emergencies or calamities or when public interest so requires. This would provide urgent relief especially to the working class who are direct contributors to field health, which in turn ultimately redounds to the health and general welfare of our countrymen. Such relief is crucial as it unburdens the very people who plays a significant role in sustaining field health so that the people's right to health and the state's commitment to universal healthcare for every Filipino is realized. In view of the foregoing, the immediate passage of House Bill Number 6772 is earnestly sought. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and distinguished colleagues.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby open.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendment, I move that we close the period of amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 6772. I so move.
As many as are in favor of House Bill 6772, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 6772 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for a few minutes' suspension.
Session suspended. Session resumes. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill Number 7363 under Committee Report Number 358, and may we ask the Secretary General to read the title of the same.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. And the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 7363.
House Bill Number 7363, an act promoting entrepreneurship by establishing a sustainable financing program for micro and small enterprises through the Pondo sa Pagbabago at Pagasenso Program and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we move to recognize, we move to open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we move to recognize Representative Christian Unabia for his sponsorship speech.
The gentleman from the First District of Misamis Oriental, the Honorable Christian Unabia, is recognized for his sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker and esteemed colleagues. I stand here today to solicit the approval of House Bill Number 7363, otherwise known as the Pondo sa Pagbabago at Pagasenso Act or the P3 Act, entitled "An Act Promoting Entrepreneurship by Establishing a Sustainable Financing Program for Micro and Small Enterprises Through the Pondo sa Pagbabago at Pagasenso Program and Appropriating Funds Therefore." Mr. Speaker, one of the challenges faced by MSMEs is access to financing. Although MSMEs can avail of loans from formal lending institutions or from financing and credit programs for MSMEs, the difficulty lies in the high interest rate and the voluminous and stringent documentary requirements. This is the reason why MSMEs especially, the microenterprises resort to borrowing from informal lenders or the so-called 5-6 moneylending system. House Bill Number 7363 or the P3 Act aims to institutionalize through law the P3 program as an alternative to the 5-6 moneylending scheme. The objectives of the P3 are as follows: to provide an affordable access and simple financing program for the country's micro and small enterprises, especially those in the poorest population and underserved areas; to provide a better alternative to informal lenders or the so-called 5-6 moneylending system; to bring down the interest rate at which the financial services is made available to MSEs and to support the recovery of MSMEs from the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic lockdown and ensure their viability. Mr. Speaker and esteemed colleagues, may I inform you that the effective interest rate of the P3 program by the partner financial institutions to end borrowers is a maximum of 2.5% per month, which is lower than the prevailing interest rate of 4.5% for microfinance institutions. I would like to emphasize that the enactment of P3 Act is necessary to ensure the continuity of the P3 program over the coming years for the welfare of the micro and small enterprises who will be given an alternative to the 5-6 microlending facility. Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleagues, I humbly ask for your support in approving House Bill Number 7363. The committee looks forward for its immediate passage. Thank you very much.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no interpolators for this measure, we move to close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, move to open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no, neither committee nor individual amendments, we move to close the period of amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to vote on second reading, House Bill Number 7363.
As many as are in favor of House Bill 7363, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 7363 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Speaker, we move to suspend the session.
Session is suspended. Session resumes. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill Number 7387 under Committee Report Number 370, and may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. And the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 7387.
House Bill 7387, an act expanding the services of the Philippine Crop Insurance Corporation and encouraging private sector participation in agricultural insurance, further amending Section 1 and Section 3.11 of Presidential Decree Number 1467, creating the Philippine Crop Insurance Corporation as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. And the period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Edwin Olivares of the First District of Paranyake City to deliver his sponsorship speech.
The gentleman from the First District of Paranyake City, the Honorable Edwin Olivares, is recognized for his sponsorship speech.
Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, fellow workers in government, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. Today, as Chairperson of the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization, I have the honor to present to this august body a proposal through House Bill Number 7387, which is consolidated version of the nine measures that were considered by the committee to expand the services of the Philippine Crop Insurance Corporation, or PCIC, and encourage the participation and fusion of private sectors' funds towards agricultural insurance. The PCIC is a government-owned and controlled corporation created on June 11, 1978 through a Presidential Decree Number 1467 by the father of our President Ferdinand Bongbong Marcos Jr. We may recall that at the time of the PCIC's creation, the country was able to export rice for the first time through the Masagana 99 program. The creation of the PCIC made certain that Filipino rice farmers whose sacrifices and participation made the Masagana 99 successful should also be protected from any financial losses arising from disastrous events as natural calamities and infestations. Through the years, the PCIC has been one of the agencies that provided immediate socor or support to Filipino rice farmers whose ventures were not always successful due to unavoidable losses. Measures give its limited mandate and budget. It is our position that the PCIC as a government agency is a performing government institution. However, given the present diversification of the country's agricultural sector, the PCIC can be goaded. the PCIC can be goaded to reach greater heights. Indeed, while the PCIC have been a constant source of protection to Filipino rice farmers since its inception, the availability of market locally and abroad for other crops call for equal protection to the growing number of Filipino farmers who have ventured into cash crops production, including livestock. Thus, through this bill, the new PCIC's expanded authorities to ensure not only rice and corn, but also livestock, fisheries and aquaculture, agroforestry projects and forest plantation and other agriculture-related infrastructures. The committee and the proponents have considered the contribution of the investment and the benefits accruing to the Philippine economy of the other farmers who stake personal resources and assets to make the agricultural sector diversified, a vital contributor to the country's economic growth and creator of jobs in the rural areas. Another equally important concern that this measure is proposing is to stimulate the agricultural insurance market by authorizing the PCIC to come up with mutually beneficial arrangement with private sector, financial institution, including cooperatives and farmers' organization to venture into agricultural insurance. The bill expects this scenario to come into fruition by authorizing the PCIC to offer reinsurance services to private sector entities that will offer insurance to farmers who can afford the premiums and appreciate the value of insuring their crops given the country's vulnerability to changing climate condition. Thus, through the continuing investment of the PCIC and expansion in other crops and infusion from the private sector, this bill looks forward to contribute to the continued growth and contribution of the Philippine agricultural sector to the post-COVID Philippine economy. In view of the foregoing approval of the House Bill Number 7387 is earnestly being sought. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 7387.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved and consideration of House Bill 7387 is hereby suspended. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for a one-minute suspension.
Session is suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on third and final reading, House Bill Number 7352 and for this purpose, may we direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the role for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 7352 and thereafter call the role for nominal voting.
House Bill 7352, An Act Implementing Resolution of Both Houses, Number 6 of the Congress of the Philippines, calling for a constitutional convention to propose amendments to a revision of the 1987 Constitution appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration for approval on third reading, House Bill Number 7352. Honorable Representatives: Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Acharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advincula, Agarao, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amaton, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistio, Atide, Augmentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Basco, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondo, Bongalon, Bordado.
Mr. Speaker.
Congressman Bordado is acknowledged.
Mr. Speaker, my vote is no and kindly allow me to explain my vote later.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bosita, Bryones, Brosas.
Mr. Speaker.
Kong Brosas, he is your...
Yes, Mr. Speaker, my vote is no and I would like to explain my vote later.
Yes, noted.
Buahain, Bulut Bektang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayong Uwi, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro France.
Mr. Speaker, my vote is no and I will explain my vote later.
Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalawa, Co Angelica Natasha, Co Elizaldi, Co Pilar, Co Wanko Jaime, Co Wanko Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Dago'o, Dalipe, Dalob, Dayangirang, Daza, Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Del Mar, De Los Santos, Dimoporo Mohamed Kalin, Dimoporo Siti Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudela, Fariñas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuente Belia, Galeos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Congressman Gomez.
There is no better time to amend the Constitution but now. We want the Philippines to be an economic powerhouse, therefore, the time is now. My vote is yes, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Congressman. Go ahead.
Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptari, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Agidorn, Jaresco, Ataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Oribata, Javier, Co Olga, Co Ricardo, Co Wilton, Conghun, Labad Labad, Lacson, Lacson Noel, Lagman.
Congressman Lagman?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My vote is no. I will explain my vote at the proper time.
Noted. Go ahead.
Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sani, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limkaytong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayan, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikiz, Manuel.
Mr. Speaker.
Manuel, you're acknowledged.
Para sa inang bayan, ang boto ng kabataan ay no sa charter change at ipapaliwanag ko ang aking boto mamaya.
Noted.
Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revidia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Oaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Oanodizon, Padernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicias Agabas, Pomaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Repto, Rehenzia, Remulia, Rivilia Brian, Rivilia Ramon Jolo, Reyes, Rilyo, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yuleohio, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romoldis Ferdinand Martin, Romoldis Yedamari, Romoldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulu, Silverio, Singson Richard, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihen, Solon, Suwan, Suansing Horacio, Suansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Deves Arnolfo, Deves Jose, Tianco, Tian, Tolentino, Tufo Joseline, Tufo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Titor, Ti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmarior, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Toazon, Vergara, Versosa, Bilia, Bilia Fuerte Luis Raymond, Bilia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Bilia Nueva, Bilia R, Bilia Raza Suarez, Bilia Rica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christian Tel, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisel Victoria, Yu Lo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri.
Second call. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7352. Deves Arnolfo, Bilia Nueva. With 301 members voting in the informative, seven members in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill Number 7352 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Session suspension, Mr. Majority Leader, for a few moments again to memorialize this occasion on the passage of this momentous and historic occasion.
Parang itagamo sa bangon, dadating ang bonus ni pa.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Bordado to explain his vote.
The Honorable gentleman from the Third District of Camarines Sur, the Honorable Gabriel Bordado, has three minutes to explain his vote.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, a major periodical reported that, and I quote, "Senate President Juan Miguel Zubiri on Saturday, March 11th, 2023, poured cold water on a move to amend or revise the 1987 Constitution, saying it did not have enough senators to back it up, especially since President Marcos himself wasn't supporting charter change," or cha-cha, unquote. Mr. Speaker, I share this position without reservation. The call for a constitutional convention is supposedly anchored on the need to liberalize the restrictive economic provisions embedded in the 1987 Philippine Constitution. Through amendments, we could make the Philippines more attractive to foreign investors. Stimulating economic activity through an increase of foreign capital is an inviting proposition. However, Mr. Speaker, we cannot pin all our hopes on the prospect that foreign investment alone would be the key to escaping our economic rot. Sustainable growth would not be possible if we fail to address the pressing concerns already threatening to overwhelm us. Therefore, Mr. Speaker, we should first set our sights towards remedying the urgent and continual problems already plaguing the country. Unemployment rate has been rising steadily since last year. Inflation inch down to 8.6% this February, still an all-time high within a 14-year timeframe. Prices of goods and commodities continue to shoot up, and the recent transport strike showed how our jeepney drivers struggle to afford the modernization the government insists on implementing. Mr. Speaker, amending the 1987 Philippine Constitution could eventually lead to more foreign investors, but it does not guarantee an instant robust economy. Likewise, it could be a costly and time-consuming endeavor that would put our very limited resources at risk. In the proposed bill, we only have seven months to prepare and elect delegates, and another seven months for them to amend the Constitution. That is, if we reach an agreement with the Senate soon, if at all. For such a momentous task, it seems that we are making rather hasty decisions. The Constitution is the fundamental law of the land. It does not only apply to the present situation of the Philippines, but is the paradigm as to how this country would be governed for generations yet to come. Therefore, I vote no to House Bill Number 7352. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Arlene Brosas of Gabriela Partilis to explain her vote.
The lady from the Partilis Gabriela, the Honorable Arlene Brosas, has three minutes to explain her vote.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, consistent with our opposition to Resolution of Both Houses Number Six, Gabriela Women's Party registers our strong rejection of this accompanying bill for Constitutional Convention, House Bill 7352, as it operationalizes the route to rewriting any aspect of the 1987 Constitution, even if it will hardly provide solutions to the urgent needs of Filipino women and the people. It takes two to cha-cha in this case. And with this accompanying bill finally hurdling the House, together with the Resolution of Both Houses Number Six, with record speed and efficiency, grand sinister designs for the benefit of those in power must really be afoot. Napakainosente naman kung iisipin walang basbas ito ng pangulo, at tangin kagustuhan lang ito ng kongreso. In truth, overhauling the post-Edsa Constitution is part and parcel of the Marcotian grand design to overturn the course of history and roll back the supreme gains of the democratic Edsa uprising. Lubhang mapanganib ang pakanang konkon na ito, dahil ipapaubaya sa mahigit tatlong daang delegado ng konvensyon ang pagbabago sa saligang batas, na hindi nililimita lamang sa pangekonomiang provisyon. Malinaw sa interpelasyon ng kinatawang ito, inamin ng sponsor ng konkon bill na walang humahadlang sa mga delegado para pag-usapan, maging ang amyenda sa term limits ng mga opisyal. Porma ng gobyerno, provisyon hinggil sa martial law, at maging ang mga batayang karapatan na nakasaad sa konstitusyon. Gagastos sa ng pagdaraus ng konkon sa loob ng pitong buwan, nang hindi bababa sa 9.5 bilyong pondo, kasama ang 10,000 per dime per day sa bawat delegado. Samantalang nagtetengang kawali ang administrasyong Marcos Jr. sa panawagang dagdagan ang ayuda sa mamamayan at tulungan ang mga manggagawang bugbog na sa taas presyo. Hindi natin malilimot kung paanong kinasangkapan ang Constitutional Convention noon sa panahon ni Marcos Senior para bigyang katwiran ang unlimited niyang pamamanginoon. Idinaos ang 1971 konkon nagdeklara ng batas militar noong 1972. Ipinhuli ang mga oposisyon na delegado sa konkon para tiyakin ang paglulual ng 1973 Constitution napabor sa unlimited na termino ni Marcos Senior. History is repeating itself, first as a tragedy, now as farce. But Filipino women and the people will not let things go full circle. Patuloy nating irerehistro ang oposisyon sa pakanang cha-cha sa forma ng Constitutional Convention. Sa ano mang bulwagan o pagkakataon, hinahamon natin ang senado na unahin ang kagyat na panawagan ng mamamayan sa dagdag na sahod at pagpapababa ng presyo. Hindi ang Charter Change train na ito. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Franz Castro of Act Teachers Partilis to explain her vote.
The lady from the Partilis Act Teachers, the Honorable Franz Castro, has three minutes to explain her vote.
Maraming salamat, gino ng speaker at sa ating majority leader. Mariing bumuboto ng no ang Act Teachers Partilis, House Bill Number 7352. Sinasalanta ang sektor ng edukasyon na isang learning crisis. Ang mga guro at kawanin ng aming sektor ay kasama sa pagsigaw sa malawak na mamamayan na nagmamakaawa na sagutin ang pamahalaan ang mga krisis na humahampas sa kanila sa araw-araw. Mababang sweldo at sahod sa harap ng sumisirit na inflation at presyo ng mga bilihin at serbisyo. Napakataas na mga buwis na direkta at dituwira nilang binabayaran. Kawala ng trabaho at lumalawak na kahirapan maging sahanay ng mga middle class. Kawala ng kita na mga magsasaka at mangingisda. Sunod-sunod na taas presyo at shortages sa mga produktong agrikultural at food crisis. Mga suliraning itong nangangailangan ng kagyat at mapagpasiang mga aksyon at solusyon mula sa pamahalaan. Mga suliraning itong hindi sinasagot at sa halip ay papalala pa nga ang cha-cha at bubuging saligang bata sa kumpas ng pangulong Marcos Jr. Kung gusto maraming paraan, napakaraming mga panokalang batas nakahain sa parehong kamara ng kongreso para tugunan ang hinahing ng taong bayan. At kabilang dito 'yung mga panokala ng bloke ng makabayan para sa salary increase, subsidies para sa iba't ibang mga sektor, mas mababang buwis para sa low and middle classes, pati 'yung mga panokalang super-rich tax bill. Mga panokala at resolusyon para sa food security, gaya na pagbabawal at regulasyon sa importasyon ng mga pangunahing produktong agrikultural. Kung gusto lamang ng kasalukuyang administrasyong ito, ay maraming paraan na dapat nitong gawin para iprayoridad at ipasa sa lalong madaling panahon. Pero tila mukhang ayaw kaya maraming dahilan at mga dahilang itong bumubuslo sa cha-cha bilang pangunahin, kung di man, natatanging hakbang. Huwag nating lilangin ang taong bayan sa konkon para sa ekon. Lamang ito ang layunin, amuin at pakalmahe ng oposisyon ng publiko sa cha-cha. Malinaw sa ating lahat, kabilang na ang mga sponsor, sa panokalang ito, na sunod na panokalang konkon act ang batas jurisprudence at historical precedents na ang nagsasabing plenario at pangkalahatan ang kapangyarihan na isang konvensyong constitutional at di kayang limitahan ng kongreso ang kapangyarihang ito. Malinaw sa atin na kung naisipan ang konkon na sumayaw ng political cha-cha, kayang-kaya nitong gawin. Kaya kayan nitong tanggalin ang pinakahawa kang garantiya ng mga mamamayan ngayong ukol sa social justice, libre at accessible na edukasyon, karapatan ng kababaihan, manggagawa at marami pang iba. Magagawa nating tanggalin ang anti-dynasty provision ang buong artikulo ukol sa pananagutan na opisyal ng gobyerno. Kung maisipan ang konkon na ma-suspend ang 2025 elections o Noel scenario, magagawa nila ito. Dagdag pa, Mr. Speaker, 'yung 10 to 15 billion na gagasusin na sana ay maiukol na sa pangangailangan ng ating mga mamamayan. Sa pagtatapos, Mr. Speaker at mga kapwa kinatawan, dapat nating balikan ang aral ng kasaysayan na buo ang 1973 Constitution sa pamamagitan ng kombinasyon ng iba't iba pang mga makinasyon ni dating pangulong Ferdinand Marcos Senior. Upang ilatag ang legal na basihan, hindi lang ang pagtagal niya sa poder, ngunit pati na rin ang kanyang diktaduria. Upang cementuhin isang crony capitalism kung saan siya at ang kanyang pamilya at mamamayani at hindi ang interes ng kapanan at kaligtasan ng ordinaryong Pilipino. Nagawa na ito sa kabilang ng kaliwatkan ng krisis na kinakaharap ng bansa noon. Dapat pakinggan ang kongreso ang hinahing ng mamamayan at makaisa sa kanilang oposisyon laban sa cha-cha. Mr. Speaker, muli inirehistro namin ang aming pagtanggi sa no vote sa House Bill 7352.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Edsel Lagman of the First District of Balbay to explain his vote.
The gentleman from the First District of Balbay, the Honorable Edsel Lagman, has three minutes to explain his vote.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I vote no to House Bill Number 7352 or the Constitutional Convention Act for the following overriding reasons. One, no less than the Chairman of the Sponsoring Committee on Constitutional Amendments admitted in plenary session that Resolution of Both Houses Number Six is not yet complete, effective, and implementable pending its approval by the Senate. Verily, the approval of the Constitutional Convention Act, which is entitled "An Act Implementing Resolution of Both Houses Number Six" of the Congress of the Philippines Calling for a Constitutional Convention, is patently precipitate and premature as there is nothing yet to be implemented. Moreover, the House of Representatives' consideration and approval of House Bill Number 7352 is an exercise in inordinate futility because no less than the Senate President disclosed that the Senate cannot master the extraordinary requisite vote to join the House in calling for a charter change by a Constitutional Convention. The eventuality of a deadlock or an impasse could have been avoided had there been a joint session between the House and the Senate in considering Resolution of Both Houses Number Six. Had the House called for a joint session with the Senate, which is the proper mode when the Congress exercises its constitutional power under Article 17 of the Constitution, and the Senate demurred or did not agree, then it would have been clear from the very start that the Senate would not now venture into charter chains. Three, again the sponsors of Resolution of Both Houses Number Six and SB Number 7352 repeatedly and correctly.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Edsel Lagman of the First District of Alba to explain his vote.
The gentleman from the First District of Alba, the Honorable Edsel Lagman, has three minutes to explain his vote.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I vote no to House Bill Number 7352 or the Constitutional Convention Act for the following overriding reasons. One, no less than the Chairman of the Sponsoring Committee on Constitutional Amendments admitted in plenary session that Resolution about Houses Number Six is not yet complete, effective, and implementable pending its approval by the Senate. Verily, the approval of the Constitutional Convention Act, which is entitled "An Act Implementing Resolution about Houses Number Six" of the Congress of the Philippines Calling for a Constitutional Convention, is patently precipitate and premature as there is nothing yet to be implemented. Moreover, the House of Representatives' consideration and approval of House Bill Number 7352 is an exercise in inordinate futility because no less than the Senate President disclosed that the Senate cannot master the extraordinary requisite vote to join the House in calling for a charter change by a constitutional convention. The eventuality of a deadlock or an impasse could have been avoided had there been a joint session between the House and the Senate in considering Resolution about Houses Number Six. Had the House called for a joint session with the Senate, which is the proper mode when the Congress exercises its constitutional power under Article 17 of the Constitution and the Senate demurred or did not agree, then it would have been clear from the very start that the Senate would not now venture into charter chains. Three, again the sponsors of Resolution about Houses Number Six and SB Number 7352 repeatedly and correctly admitted that the agenda of a constitutional convention cannot be controlled by the Congress. Consequently, the political provisions in the Constitution can be altered, including term limits. This could be the clandestine agenda which the people feared when they invariably opposed cha-cha before and until now. Four, no less than the Banco Central of the Philippines reported that direct foreign investments to the Philippines shrunk by 23% in 2022 because of a like-old extended global slowdown and high inflation which adversely affected investor decisions. The decrease in foreign direct investments was not due to the nationalistic provision in the Constitution which the proponents of cha-cha want to liberalize or eliminate. Global and domestic economic conditions are the determinants of FDI's. Five, with negative economic indicators plaguing the economy, coupled with a dubious human rights record, no amount of liberalization of the constitutional economic provisions would induce or attract more foreign investors. And six, on the other hand, when we open wide the economy up to 100% to foreign investment, the lords of foreign capital may not only supplement Filipino capital but so plant it altogether in gross violation of the constitutional mandate that the state shall develop a self-reliant and independent economy effectively controlled by Filipinos. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Raúl Manuel of Kabataan Partilist to explain his vote.
The gentleman from the Partilist Kabataan, the Honorable Raúl Daniel Manuel, has three minutes to explain his vote.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Dahil ngayon ay International Women's Month, nais kong simulan ang aking talumpati sa pamamagitan ng pagpapakita nitong likhang sining, the water of life. Ito ay gawa ng Filipino artist at anti-dictatorship activist na si Pasita Abad. Pinapakita rito ang isang ina na pinapainom ng tubig ang kanyang mga anak. Even though there might be no water left for her, she still tries to nourish her children amid the dire situation they are in. They are in a refugee camp to be safe from the abuse of foreign-backed local troops of the Khmer Rouge. Dito sa Pilipinas, narian ang ating ina, ang inang bayan, na may napakaraming rekurso ang pinagkatiwala sa atin kahit na siya ay naaabuso at napagsasamantalahan sa halip na alagaan at payabungin pa. Malawak na karagatan, matabang lupain, milyon-milyon kabataan, magagaling na mga kawanin at masisipag na anak pawis. Para sa inang bayan, bumuboto ang representasyon na ito ng no sa House Bill 7352. Naniniwala kaming hindi dapat unahin ang cha-cha sa aspeto man ng ekonomiya o politika, kahit sa pamamagitan pa ng Concon. Nasa gitna tayo ng makasaysayang krisis na dinaranas na mga pamilyang Pilipino sa kabuhayan, edukasyon, kalusugan, at batayang karapatan. Wala rin namang konsenso sa hanay na mga anak ng bayan. Para sa cha-cha, vaya Concon. Hindi ito ang hinahanap ng ating kababaihang breadwinner, mga yong professional, mga working student, mga driver, mga factory worker, magsasaka, at iba pang sektor sa bayan. Paulit-ulit natin itong pinarating sa iba't-ibang yugto ng deliberasyon ng panokalang ito. Kapansin-pansin, nasa ilalim ng Marcos Junior Administration, meron tayong mga nirerevised at pinapalitan kahit hindi pa nga natin lubos na sinisikap na ipatupad at tapat na tasahin ang mga programa natin sa kasalukuyan. Halimbawa, kahit walang sapat na batayan, ang Marcos Junior Admin na ibasura ang NSTP, ginawa niya itong prioridad para ipatupad muli ang mandatory ROTC at tinatakampaa bilang urgent. Kinalimutan ang malakanyang ang mga abuso na siyang dahilan kung bakit ginawang optional ang ROTC. Ngayon naman, Mr. Speaker, sa usapin ang cha-cha, ilang beses nating napatunayan na marami namang magagandang prinsipyo at gabay na nilalatag ang kasalukuyang konstitusyon. Lumabas din sa mga diskusyon na hindi pa naman naipapatupad ng buo ang 1987 Constitution. Pero sa ilalim ng Marcos Junior Admin, mabilis na sumulong ang panokalang baguhin ang mga bahagi ng konstitusyon, vaya Concon. Ganon ang tendency ng administrasyon kapag wala itong sense of history at mulat nitong isinasantabi ang kasaysayan. Hindi nito binabalikan ang nakaraan ng ating inang bayan at tapat na sinusuri ang kasalukuyan para sumulong ng tama sa hinaharap. Sa ganitong lagay, hindi natin natutugunan ang ugat na mga problemang panlipunan at pangekonomiya dahil nakukuntento tayo sa mga programang pantapal o pantakip lamang sa dekad-dekadang pagdurusan ng taong bayan. Final points, Mr. Speaker. Mariing tumitindig ang kabataan na hindi kailangan ang cha-cha, kahit vaya Concon pa. Kaya nating tugunan ang problemang panlipunan gamit ang nakatindig na framework ng ating konstitusyon na kontrateranya. Delikado na ibukas ang ating konstitusyon sa maaring pagtanggal o pagextend ng term limits at pagtanggal ng restriksyon sa political dynasties. Dapat ding itaguyod ang balangkas ng konstitusyon na kontra kolonyalismo sa makabagong panahon. Tapos na tayo sa direktang kontrol na mga dayuhan sa ating inang bayan, Mr. Speaker. Pero hayaan ba naman natin ang hindi direktang kontrol bilang modernong paraan na pahihimasok sa ating economic, cultural, and political affairs? Kapag may 100% na dayuhang pagmamayari ng lupa, dikasnayaman, serbisyo publiko, paaralan, at media sa bansa, tiyak na lalamunin ang ating lokal na ekonomiya at kultura. To save the motherland, the youth says no to charter change. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the explanation of vote of Representative Mujib Hataman be inserted to our records.
There any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we immediately transmit to the Senate all the bills that we approve on third reading today.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
I move for a one-minute suspension, Mr. Speaker.
Session is suspended. Session resumes. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business, I move that we consider House Bill Number 7577 under Committee Report Number 438 and may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
There any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 7577.
House Bill Number 7577, "An Act Creating a Separate District Engineering Office in the Second Legislative District in Zamboanga City and Appropriating Funds Therefore."
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open this period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Madrona, Vice Chairperson of Committee on Public Works and Highways, to deliver to sponsor House Bill Number 7577.
The Honorable Madrona is recognized for his sponsorship speech.
Thank you very much, Speaker. I have the honor to sponsor House Bill Number 7577, "An Act to Establish a Separate DEO in the Second Legislative District of Zamboanga City and Appropriating Funds Therefore." Considering the importance of establishment of a district engineering office, especially for the development and concentrated improvement of the roads of the city, it is my earnest request that this House Bill be approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved and the period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
There any objection? The period of amendments is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee amendment, I move that we proceed to the individual amendment.
There any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize Representative Jude Asidre to introduce his individual amendment.
The Honorable Asidre is recognized to introduce his amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, on page 1, line 1, section 1, delete the word "separate" and replace it with the word "new."
What does the sponsor say?
Mr. Speaker, accepted.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we move to approve the amendment.
There any objection? The Chair hears none. The amendment is approved. The Honorable Asidre may proceed.
Mr. Speaker, on line 2, after the word "created", delete the phrase "in the second legislative district."
What does the sponsor say?
Speaker, accepted.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we move to approve the amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The amendment is hereby approved. The Honorable Asidre may proceed.
Mr. Speaker, on line 3, I move that we delete the word "and" and replace it with the word "which."
What does the distinguished sponsor say?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Accepted.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve the amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The amendment is approved. The Honorable Asidre may proceed.
Mr. Speaker, on the same line, line 3, I move that we delete the word "second" and replace it with the word "first."
What does the sponsor say?
Accepted, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve the amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The amendment is approved. The Honorable Asidre may proceed.
Mr. Speaker, on line 4, after the word "city", add comma and the phrase "located in Barangay Divisoria", then add comma after the word "shall", insert the word "now." So I move, Mr. Speaker.
What does the honorable sponsor say?
Speaker, accepted.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve the amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved and the amendment is approved. The Honorable Asidre may proceed.
Mr. Speaker, on line 5, I move that we delete the word "first" and replace it with the word "second."
What does the distinguished sponsor say?
Mr. Speaker, accepted.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve the amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The amendment is approved. The Honorable Asidre may proceed.
Mr. Speaker, on line 12, I move that we delete the word "nino" and replace it with the word "nino."
What does the distinguished sponsor say?
Accepted, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve the amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The amendment is approved. The Honorable Asidre may proceed.
Mr. Speaker, on line 15 and 16, I move that we delete the phrase "shall be located in Barangay Divisoria and..."
What does the distinguished sponsor say?
Mr. Speaker, accepted.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve the amendment.
There any objection? The Chair hears none. The amendment is approved. The Honorable Asidre may proceed.
Mr. Speaker, on the title, I move that we delete the words "as separate" and replace it with the words "an additional" and delete the phrase "in the second legislative district." The title will now read as follows. "An Act Creating an Additional District Engineering Office in Zamboanga City and Appropriating Funds Therefore."
What does the distinguished sponsor say?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Accepted.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve the amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The amendment is approved.
That is all, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading House Bill Number 7577 as amended.
As many as are in favor of House Bill 7577 as amended, please say "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, please say "nay." The ayes have it, House Bill 7577 as amended is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business, I move to... I move to consider, resume consideration of House Bill Number 7387 under Committee Report 370 and may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 7387.
House Bill Number 7387, "An Act Expanding the Services of the Philippine Crop Insurance Corporation and Encouraging Private Sector Participation in Agricultural Insurance, Further Amending Section 1 and Section 3.11 of Presidential Decree Number 1467, Creating the Philippine Crop Insurance Corporation," as amended.
The Majority Leader will state the parliamentary status.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of this measure is still in the period of sponsorship and debate and for this purpose, I move that we recognize Representative Edwin Olivares to sponsor the measure.
The Honorable Edwin Olivares is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Mr. Speaker, your presentation already delivered a sponsorship message or speech a while ago.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendment is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee amendment, I move that we proceed with the individual amendment.
There any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Espares of Co-op Not Co-Partilist to introduce the individual amendment.
The Honorable Espares is recognized to introduce his amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have five items to be introduced and proposing for its amendments on the proposed bill. Number one, Mr. Speaker, this is with regards to PD Number 1467. Delete subsection 9.1, section 9 of PD Number 1467 as amended and in lieu thereof, insert the following. 9.1, "The powers of the PCIC shall be vested in an exercise by its Board of Directors composed of eight members as follows: One, Secretary of Finance as Ex officio Chairperson; Number two, President of the PCIC as Ex officio Vice Chairperson; Number three, President of the Land Bank; Number four, Secretary of the Department of Agriculture; Number five, one representative from the private insurance industry to be nominated by the Secretary of Finance; and number six, three representatives from the subsistence farmer sector, preferably representing agrarian reform beneficiaries, cooperatives, or associations coming from Luzon, Visayas, and Mindanao, who shall be selected and nominated by the different farmers organizations or cooperatives."
What does the distinguished sponsor say?
Mr. Speaker, this presentation accept and amendable with this amendment introduced by our colleague.
Majority Leader.
Join the sponsor, Mr. Speaker. I move that we approve the amendment.
There any objection? The Chair hears none. The amendment is approved. The Honorable Espares may proceed.
Another amendments, Mr. Speaker. Delete subsection 9.4, section 9 of PD Numbers 1467 as amended and in lieu thereof, insert the following. 9.4, "The Chairperson and the members of the Board shall each receive..." each receive per gym pursuant to existing laws for its meeting of the board actually attended, provided that in the case of the representatives of the subsistence farmer sector, the board is authorized to provide funds to defray the cost of reasonable travel expenses and if necessary, subsistence expenses in addition to their per gym.
What does the distinguished sponsor say?
Mr. Speaker, this presentation is acceptable and the amendment introduced by our colleague.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve the amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the amendment is approved. The Honorable Esparas may proceed.
Number three amendments, Mr. Speaker, delete section 11- B of section 11- B of P D Number 1467 as amended and in lieu thereof, insert the following: 11- B, no claims benefits. Any insured farmers who has not filed any claim during the immediately preceding three crop seasons or any insured fish pond or fish cage operator shall have not filed, who has not filed any claim during the immediately preceding three harvest seasons shall be entitled to a no claim benefit of at least 10% of his premium share paid for said crop seasons to be deposited in a trust fund and to be managed by the corporation. Such trust fund may be used to finance premium rebate or premium credit applicable to the immediately following crop seasons as determined by the Board of Directors.
What does the distinguished sponsor say?
Mr. Speaker, amenable and accepted.
Majority Leader.
We move to approve the amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the amendment is approved. The Honorable Esparas may proceed.
The number four amendments, Mr. Speaker, delete the intersection 14 of P D Number 1467 as amended and in lieu thereof, insert the following: Section 14, inter-agency linkages. To support and promote the operations of the corporation, all government departments, bureaus, offices, agencies, and instrumentalities, national or local or lending institutions, government or private, now or hereafter engaged in the supervised credit program to farmers and fisher folks and such other public or private entities as may be called upon by the corporation, shall act as cooperating agencies to the corporation and for his purpose are hereby directed to design their policies, programs, rules, and regulations as to attune and synchronize them with the objectives of the corporation.
What does the distinguished sponsor say?
Mr. Speaker, amenable and accepted.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we move to approve the amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the amendment is hereby approved. The Honorable Esparas may continue.
In the PIF amendments, delete section 17- A of P D Number 1467 as amended and in lieu thereof, insert the following: Section 17- A, penal probation. The claimant or any person who through malfeasance, misfeasance, or nonfeasance allow his previous claim to be paid, including the claimant himself, shall upon final conviction be punished by imprisonment of not less than three years but not more than eight years or a fine of not less than 100,000 but not more than 600,000 or both. At the discretion of the court, the P C I C personnel who allowed the commission of the offense shall in addition be dismissed from office and forfeit all privileges and benefits which may accrue to such personnel.
What does the distinguished Olivares say?
Mr. Speaker, amenable and accepted.
Majority Leader.
Move to approve the amendment.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion to approve the amendment is approved. The Honorable Esparas may proceed.
The last, Mr. Speaker. So lastly, in consideration of the foregoing, the title of the bill shall now read as follow: "An Act Expanding the Services of the Philippine Crop Insurance Corporation and Encouraging Private Sector Participation in Agricultural Insurance, Further Amending Presidential Decree Number 1467, Creating the Philippine Crop Insurance Corporation, as amended."
What does the distinguished sponsor say?
Mr. Speaker, amenable and accepted.
Majority Leader.
Approve the amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the amendment is approved.
That's all, Mr. Speaker, and thank you very much.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no further individual amendments nor committee amendments, we move to terminate the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the period of amendments is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to vote on second reading, House Bill Number 7387 as amended.
As many as are in favor of House Bill 7387, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill 7387 as amended is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, with leave of the House, I move that we open the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the Chair declares a privilege hour. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Arlene Brosas of Gabriela Partilist to deliver to his privileged speech.
What is the subject matter of the speech of the Honorable Arlene Brosas?
Mr. Speaker, it is about the women rights defenders and the shrinking democratic space, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Arlene Brosas may proceed with her privileged speech.
Mr. Speaker, I stand here for a personal and collective privilege. Magandang hapon po sa lahat ng nakikinig sa ating session. This International Women's Month, we honor our fearless women's rights defenders who continue to fight for women's and people's rights amid struggles and adversities. These are the women who risk their lives every day to fight for justice, freedom from exploitation, abuse, and violence, and to make sure that everyone has a chance at a better future. Sa kabila ng mga nagawa at ipinaglalaba ng ating women rights defenders, patuloy silang nakakaranas ng karahasan at panunupil mula sa estado. They face red tagging, surveillance, trumped up charges, and abuse, including physical, mental, and psychological abuse. According to Karapatan, a human rights group out of the 842 political prisoners in the Philippines, 169 women political prisoners remain inside the prison. Dahil sa kawalangkibo ng gobyerno sa mga isyong kinakaharap ng mamamayan, kinikilala natin na natutulak ang ibang kababaihan na lumabas sa nakagis na nilang buhay at humawak ng armas na para sa kanila ay magiging daan upang magkaroon ng maayos na lipunan para sa kababaihan at sambayanan. Many women take up arms because of the injustice in our society. This is the harsh reality many women face. And whether or not we agree to it, what the government must do is acknowledge and more importantly, address their legitimate demands and make genuine reforms in the country. Mr. Speaker, walang mali sa pagtindig para sa karapatang pan tao. Ang masama ay ang paghamak sa kababaihang tumitindig para iparinig sa mga nagbibingibingihan ang boses ng mamamayang inaapi at nasalaylayan. Women rights defenders deserve our respect and admiration for their bravery, for their strength in the face of adversity, and for their dedication to making this world a better place. Thus, we, the halls of Congress, here in the halls of Congress, they should never be used to slander, accuse, and spread misinformation against women's rights defenders. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Arlene Brosas to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved and the speech of the Honorable Arlene Brosas is referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Raoul Daniel Manuel of Kabataan Partilist to avail of the privilege hour.
The gentleman from the Partilist Kabataan, the Honorable Manuel is recognized for his privileged speech.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would like to avail of the privilege to speak in defense of women inside and outside Congress. Ngayon po, again, International Women's Month, kaya dapat ay sama-sama tayo sa paano natin na tinitiyak na ang ating empowered women ay nagagawa ang kanilang trabaho ng walang pagpapahamak at vilification sa kanila. Kahapon, Mr. Speaker, ay nagplay ng isang video na actually ay kontensious at pinopoint out natin based on three grounds. First, Mr. Speaker, such a video endangers our colleagues. In an all-women's session, ay niretag ang Gabriela Women's Party, and also not just that party list, but also another member of Congress. Yours truly, representation ng mga kabataan sa ating Congresso. Second ground, Mr. Speaker, ay unfortunately ginamit din ang all-women's session to attack fellow women who are outside Congress. First slide pa lang ng video na iyon, Mr. Speaker, ay naglalaman na kaagad ano ng ba't ibang mga paratang laban sa ating mga kapakabataan na sila din ay mga kababaihan. Yung Takloban Five, Mr. Speaker, na hinuli dahil sa mga gawa-gawang kaso, pinapalabas na mga armed combatants, but in fact, they are civil society leaders, and I know them personally, Mr. Speaker. Miral Heion ng Bayan Eastern Visayas, naging officer ng U P Visayas University Student Council, an admirable female student leader, naging student regent nominee din ng University of the Philippines system. Also part of Takloban Five, Mariel Domikil ng Rural Missionaries of the Philippines Eastern Visayas, naging officer ng U P Takloban Student Council. Also, Frenchy May Kumpyo, Executive Director ng Eastern Vista. So, nananawagan nga actually tayo na i-drop ang mga trumped up charges laban sa kanila at palayain na sila. A threat to them is a threat to young Filipino women nationwide. At pangatlo, Mr. Speaker, ayaw natin na na-downgrade ang diskursso sa loob ng House of Representatives. As far as we know, slides are supposed to undergo checking, pero nagamit ang session para mailusot ang slides containing red tagging and twisted narratives. Hindi po kaayaayang tingnan na naisama pa ang logo at ang pangalan ng House of Representatives. So to defend the integrity of the House of Representatives, I will suggest something later on, Mr. Speaker. Pero I'd like to point out, lalo na dito sa ating Congresso, na sana ay hindi natin i-enable ang red tagging dito. Red tagging belongs to the lowest forms of reasoning that humanity has achieved throughout its evolution, Mr. Speaker. Kaya po, while we are yet to approve the Journal of the House of Representatives for its session in March 13, 2022, this representation appeals to this August body to strike from the Journal any reference to the video that was played and to delete from the live stream such a video. Based on those three points, I think I have spoken enough and I end my piece. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of Honorable Manuel to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved and the privileged speech of the Honorable Manuel, including his appeal, is referred to the Committee on Rules for their appropriate action. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Sergio Sidagooc of APEC Partilist to deliver his privileged speech.
The gentleman from the Partilist APEC, the Honorable Sergio Sidagooc is recognized to avail of the privilege hour.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues and members of this August chamber and to the Filipino people, magandang gabi po sa ating lahat. I rise today on a matter of personal and collective privilege, in particular, the growing concern in the energy sector, the ever-increasing electricity rates. Recently, the increases in electric bills have been widely felt by consumers. In fact, in a study by an independent think tank, our electricity rates are described as the most expensive in the entire Asia because we are paying at true cost without government subsidy at all. Unlike other Asian neighbors, host electricity cost is highly subsidized by the government. Mr. Speaker, high electricity rates we charge our consumers is also one of the hindrances to foreign investment. If unchecked, high electricity rates create domino effect in the economic condition of our country endured by millions of electricity end users. We must bear in mind that all industries and services are power intensive. Even our tourism industry, its cost is passed on in a form of production or cost of services. Yung mga turista natin gumagamit ng air conditioning units, water pumps, lahat po yon, kahit sa akala natin ay hindi power intensive, power intensive po ang mga resorts at hotels na ginagamit ng ating tourism industry. As we experience sky-high cost of imported fuel like coal and oil as normally used in the majority of our power plants, its importation is slapped with various form of taxation from its point of origin until its final destination, the power plant. And as its cost increase, the tax also correspondingly balloon based on the fixed tax rate. That's why the subject matter of my privileged speech, Mr. Speaker, is excessive and unnecessary taxation on electricity. Mr. Speaker, it is therefore imperative to examine the current form of taxation on our electricity as we believe this representation, being forty years already in this industry, firmly believe that some items in the electricity bill should not be taxable in relation to the definition of goods and services in our existing national internal revenue code which is being implemented by the Bureau of Internal Revenue. Mr. Speaker, if we carefully examine each item on our monthly electric bill, we can find that there are excessive and unnecessary taxes being applied. Therefore, this representation is appealing to the Bureau of Internal Revenue to review the taxes imposed on electricity as these taxes as fast-throat charges. I would like also to call the Energy Regulatory Commission to shed light on this matter and further revisit their methodology of billing or computing our electricity rates. Pungtitingnan po natin, Mr. Speaker, it has long been my battle cry as member of the Power Black in the Eighteenth Congress and now in the Nineteenth Congress that electricity is a right. It is the state duty to protect this right and to make sure that the electricity consumers' interest is part of the legislative agenda of our government. Mr. Speaker, as a lawmaker, I cannot help but notice the indebig breakdown of our electric bill, charges paid by electricity end users. There are several items with corresponding value-added tax which I have doubt as to the basis and propriety of taxing this him. Pwede ba nating ibalik yung breakdown? Ang ating konsumante ay nagbabayad ng patong-patong na buwis na may tuturing na kalabisan na alinsonod sa ilang provision ng National Internal Revenue Code. Una, yung lifeline subsidy, yung nasa pangapat na may araw, pangatlo pa lang na may araw. Yung lifeline rate subsidy, Mr. Speaker, ay sinisingil sa mga handy availers. Ang ibig sabihin po niyan, ah, in the case of Miralco in Metro Manila, may cap yung konsumo ng residential consumers. In the case of Miralco, 100 kilowatt hour pababa, may rompo yang more or less 15% discount. However, ang nagbabayad ng mga buwis However, ang nagbabayad po niyan ay hindi po gobyerno. Ang nagbabayad po niyan ay 'yung kumokonsumo ng 101 kilowatt hour pataas. Kaya ang tawag po niya, Lifeline Subsidy. So ito po 'yung binabayad ng hindi nakakaabell, 'yung 101 pataas, sinubsidays po niya 'yung discount na binibigay doon sa kumokonsumo ng 100 pababa. Pero, kahit subsidy, may tax pa rin na 12%. Tinulungan mo na nga 'yung gobyerno na ah, ah, magkaroon ng discount 'yung hindi nakabell. Supposed to be, it should be the government that will give subsidy or discount, but under our existing law, Republic Act 9136, particularly Section 73, ang magbabayad po ay hindi, ay 'yung hindi nakabell. Pero, tinatax pa rin po natin 'yung kanyang subsidy doon sa binibigyan ng discount. Pangalawa po, 'yung Systems Lost Charge, 'yan po 'yung naunang may araw sa presentation ko. Losses na nga siya, kasi 'yan 'yung ang Systems Lost ay 'yung korinti na nawawala mula sa planta na pinanggalingan papunta sa mga bahay natin or sa mga gumagamit. So 'yung pagtransmit ng korinte mula sa generating units or generation, dumadaan po siya sa transmission line ng NGCP, papunta sa distribution utility like Miralco. May nawawala po 'yan, pero binabayaran po natin. Kaya mayroon pong Systems Lost Charge. Kung halimbawa, 100 'yung kilowatt hour 'yung galing sa planta, ang dumating na lang sa bahay mo, 95. Yung 5 kilowatt hour, binabayaran po natin 'yan, pero wala pong serbisyo na nagawa. Kung halimbawa, ang binabayaran natin na services, paano nagkaroon ng services? Nawala nga 'yan. Pero, mayroon pa ring 12% tabat. Losses na nga. Pangalawa, ah, pangatlo, 'yung Interclass Cross Subsidy, 'yung pangalawang may araw. Ang ibig sabihin po ng Interclass Subsidy, 'yung ah, isang klase ng consumer like commercial, kasi ang classes of consumers, residential, commercial, public building, street lighting. Yung ah, 'yung residential ay normally sinasubsidays po 'yan ng commercial. Yung subsidy na 'yan, 'yan 'yung tinatawag na Interclass Cross Subsidy, tinatax pa rin po. Subsidy na nga. Nagbabayad ka na nga ng subsidy voluntarily, pero tinatax pa rin. Yung Membership Contribution for Capital Expenditures, lahat po ng distribution utility, kung mag-repair ka ng linya, mag-extend ka ng linya, capital projects po 'yan ang tawag. Ipapail mo 'yan sa Energy Regulatory Commission. Ang cost po niya, kung ilang million, ay binabayaran po lahat ng kumokonsumo ng korinte. Pero, ina-advance po 'yan sa pagkolikta. Ang tawag po niyan is ah, 'yung ah, CapEx or Reinvestment Fund. Pero, nagbabayad kayan advance, tinatax pa 'yung bayad mo in advance just to put up or repair the line. Now, dito sa franchise tax ng NGCP, under Republic Act 9511, ah, NGCP ah, was given the franchise as the transmission service provider. Under Section 9 of that particular law, the NGCP or the grantee shall pay a franchise tax equivalent to 3% of all gross receipts derived by the grantee from each operation until this franchise. Said tax shall in lieu of income tax and any and all taxes, duties, fees, and charges of any kind. So, in example na natin 'yung NGCP, in lieu of 3% ah, 3% tax doon sa kanyang gross revenue. For example, recently, the Energy Regulatory Commission approved 50 billion pesos na ah, tinatawag na MAR or Maximum Allowable Revenue. Yung 3% na 'yan ay 1.5 billion, pero hindi po NGCP ang nagbabayad, kasi the transmission charge that we're paying ah, is inclusive of the 3% franchise tax. Ito 'yung example ko sa Siargao Electric Cooperative, Siarilco. Yung kumokonsumo na ng 'yung Siarilco ay nagbabayad sa NGCP ng more than 2 million pesos for the month of February ata'to. Ang binabayaran na franchise tax ay nasa 65,000 pesos. So, kung sa Miralco 'yan napakalaki po 'yan, napakalaki. Ibig sabihin, ah, tayo po ang nagbabayad doon sa franchise tax ng National Grid Corporation of the Philippines. 3% na nga lang ang pinabayad ng batas in lieu of all taxes pinasa pa sa atin, sa consumers. I don't know what is the legal basis of the Energy Regulatory Commission kung bakit nila pinayagan na ah, ipasa to sa atin. If you read the entire law, no, granting franchise to NGCP, wala pong ganon na pwedeng ipasa. Ang mabasa mo lang, they will only be paying 3% in lieu of all taxes. So, Mr. Speaker, no, it is very unfortunate that this tax is also being passed on and paid by the consumers as provided in the monthly bill. Ang nangungulik tapo dito ay 'yung mga distribution utilities like Miralco and Electric Operatives which I am representing. With that, Mr. Speaker, I am urging the Bureau of Internal Revenue to review this unnecessary taxes on electricity paid by the end consumers. Further, I am also urging the Energy Regulatory Commission to review the regulations allowing profit-oriented power industry players to pass on their respective corporate taxes to electricity end users. ERC Resolution Number 20, Series of 2005 mandates all distribution utility, no, ah, to collect these passed-on charges on the seal and transmission of electricity. Again, passing on the charges of electricity to end users ah, is a, is a job of all the distribution utility. However, ah, they should examine ano lang 'yung appropriate taxes na dapat itax. Because in summary, practically all taxes being charged doon sa mga tinutukoy ko ay parang wala sa batas. Eh, those taxes do not belong to the definition of services nor products. Like 'yung subsidy, that is not a product, that is not a services. Like 'yung Systems Lost, losses na nga, that is not a product nor that is a services. Why should it be slapped with tax? So, kung susumahin mo 'yung binayaran natin na tax, kung magimport ka, Mr. Speaker, ng panggatong coal or diesel or bunker, ang importisyon pa lang may mga customs duties, et cetera, excise tax. Pagginatong mo na siya sa planta, ang kalalabasan niya 'yung 1 kilowatt hour. So, 'yung 1 kilowatt hour, 'yan 'yung generation charge na binabayaran natin, may 12% siya na bat. Then, tatakbo siya papunta sa bahay mo, dadaan siya sa linya ng National Grid Corporation of the Philippines. Transmission charge may 12% na namanabat. Pagdating sa distribution utility, i transmit na naman siya papunta sa mga bahay-bahay. Nagbabayad tayo ng distribution charge because that is the charge of the distribution utility. Mayroon na namang 12% na bat, plus 'yung mga ganyan na tinutukoy ko na hindi talaga services nor product, lahat may bat 'yan. So biruin mo 'yan from importisyon of fuel hanggang makarating sa bumbilla mo para iilaw 'yung bumbilla mo. That is not only double taxation for me, that is multiple taxation. That's why ah, it is very, ah, it is very glaring na kailangan nating tingnan at repisahin dahil palaga'y ko kung matanggal itong mga ah, unnecessary taxes na'to, palaga'y ko malaking bagay na maiba ba 'yung presyo natin ng korinte by just, by just, no, ah, excluding these items in the ah, ah, computation of value-added tax. So the Filipino people, Mr. Speaker, are still recovering from the struggles of the pandemic. Let us help ease their financial burden by ensuring that the taxes we are collecting are appropriate and have legal basis. Sa hirap ng panahon ngayon, ay mahalaga ang bawat sintimo. Every peso counts and for every peso lost due to excessive unnecessary taxes, we are bordering them, no, with these charges. Let us, let us be a government that is a pro-people and pro-consumer. It is in our hands as lawmakers to protect the welfare of our Filipino countrymen and ensure that they are not burdened with excessive unnecessary and for me, it might be illegal taxation, so to speak. So patuloy po akong aasa na magtutulungan ang mga sangay ng gobyerno upang iangat ang buhay ng ating mga kababayan para sa mas maunlad at maliwanag na bukas. At kahit maliwanag 'yung bahay mo, Mr. Speaker, ay hindi po maliwanag ang piningin mo kung ikaw po ay nagbabayad ng hindi karapat-dapat bayaran na buhis. Magandang hapon at maraming salamat uli, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Dagooc to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
The speech of the Honorable Serio Dagooc is referred to the Committee on Rules for appropriate action. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adjourn session until tomorrow, March 15, 2023, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
The Chair will entertain a motion to terminate the period, the privilege hour.
I'm sorry, I would like to withdraw my earlier motion. Mr. Speaker, I move that we terminate the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of, the privilege hour is terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adjourn session until tomorrow, March 15, 2023, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
Session is adjourned until tomorrow, Wednesday, March 15, at 3:00 PM.